Counselor Campbell.
Here.
Counselor Siomo. Counselor Edwards. Counselor Sabi George. Counselor Flaherty. Counselor Flynn. Counselor Garrison. Counselor Janey.
Present.
Counselor McCarthy. Counselor O'Malley.
Present.
Counselor Wu. And Counselor Zachem.
Counselor McCarthy is here. At this time, I have been informed by the clerk that a quorum is present. I would like all my colleagues, guests, and staff to please rise. As he leads us, our lovely clerk, through the invocation, I ask that everyone remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance after the invocation.
Thank you, Counselor. Good afternoon, everyone. "Spirit of life and love which moves through us and through all the world, may we this day be grateful for the gift of life which is ours, remembering today and always that the life we have and hold is to us a mystery and precious. May this day be reminded of the responsibilities we carry, not so that we are intimidated or overwhelmed, but so that we may be true to them, so that we may be faithful in carrying them forward. May we this day maintain a sense of perspective, remembering who we are, engaging the tasks at hand, but understanding our limitations, understanding our own shortcomings, forgiving ourselves and others if we fall short of perfection. May we this day be inspired, be filled with new breath, and be filled with new enthusiasm, be ready to see fresh opportunity, new perspectives, unnoticed avenues for action and resolution. And may we this day remember those virtues that bless our lives and bless the lives of others, the virtues of caring and concern, the virtues of honesty and respect, the virtues of charity, industry, and patience. And may we, the members of the City Council, maintain a high sense of their calling. Remember that they are invested here with honor and called to a wider vision of the world, a world made more fair, more just, more equitable by their efforts.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. And today, we have two presentations. The first will be the Shattuck Awards. If I could ask folks from the Municipal Research Bureau and all of the Shattuck Award recipients I just wanted to quickly, we had a great reception right before the council meeting started for the Shattuck Award recipients, and we do this every year in partnership with the Municipal Research Bureau. And what's so exciting, frankly, about these awards is they are awarded to our dedicated and long-serving public employees. So there are some recipients who've received an award today that have worked for the city for over 40 years. And so I'm going to invite Pam to come up and say a couple of words, also to say the names of the folks who are receiving the awards, and then we're going to just take a group picture. But I just wanted to publicly acknowledge them, folks at home, look at these faces, they serve you every single day, overworked, underpaid, but they are dedicated to all of us. And we also talked about the fact that regardless of who's sitting in these chairs as counselors or whoever the mayor is, these folks have been here and dedicated and serving us every single day. So thank you to each and every one of the recipients. We really appreciate you.
Thank you, Andrea. It's interesting to be on this side of the City Council chamber. We are so pleased to be able to share with you and celebrate with you our Shattuck Award winners for 2019, recognizing key public servants who do go unrecognized, as we mentioned. This is one of the joys of what the Research Bureau is able to do beyond the dollars and cents and numbers that we often share with you. So we're so pleased to be able to celebrate our folks here. We've got eight wonderful recipients this year from many different departments, and they've been through quite a journey with us, as we've gone through different events, including the awards dinner. And so we're just so proud of the group this year, and we got so many people saying, "What a wonderful group of people this year," and also commenting on individually how much they appreciate your individual achievements. So we're so proud of you. Thank you for being part of our event this year and letting us celebrate you, and thank you for your support of these longstanding public servants. Thank you.
So I just met some of the folks, so I don't have the list of names, but I want you to each speak your name. So get up here. Linda, you know, start with you. We just met, but I remember she's Linda. Linda, please say your name and the department you work for.
Linda Lavedini, Boston Public, East Boston.
Jill Oakzik, Boston Planning and Development Agency.
Deborah Samuels, Boston Public Health Commission, Home Services.
Jeff Lane, Boston Public Schools.
Linda Mayo, Boston Fire Department.
Joseline Abhijati, Registered Nurse, Boston Arts Academy, Boston Public Schools.
Henry Luttein, City of Boston Law Department.
So these are incredible public employees. Remember those names. They're dedicated, they live in our neighborhoods. So thank you for your service. And at this time, I would like all of my colleagues to come up for a quick picture. And now, we have another special presentation by Counselors Flynn, Baker, and Janey.
Thank you, Counsel President Campbell. I'm here with Counselor Janey, Counselor Baker, Counselor O'Malley, and we're here, we are honored to welcome Police Officers Green and Police Officer O'Connor, here today to recognize their heroism in service to our community. These two dedicated police officers saved a six-week-old baby in the South End recently. They were stopped by the parents of a choking baby when they were in the South End and the baby was unresponsive. These officers quickly performed back massages in trying to clear the baby's earway, and eventually, the baby started breathing and making noises again. The baby is okay after being treated by our EMS professionals as well. We want to commend these two officers for their quick action that saved this baby. We know that the baby's parents are grateful to both of these dedicated police officers, and we are also grateful for your service to our community and our city. We have a resolution here recognizing both of these officers, and they are presented by me, Counselor Janey, Counselor Baker, Counselor O'Malley. Both of those police officers live in Counselor O'Malley's district, and we're just so honored that these police officers answered the call to duty, and they're of great reflection upon the residents of Boston, and we're just honored that their quick, quick lifesaving skills were used on that day. I'd like to ask my colleague Counselor Baker, or Counselor Janey, to offer comments as well.
Thank you so much. I just want to extend my deep, deep gratitude for your heroism, for just stepping up and stepping in. As a mom, I know that this is one of the scariest things that you can go through as a mom, and to have such a young baby be unresponsive and cannot breathe for you guys to just step in, we are all grateful. So for all the moms around the world, all parents everywhere, certainly for our South End community, I just want to also acknowledge Captain Sweeney for his work and his dedication. So thank you for all that you do every single day, but especially for saving the life of this child. We're deeply grateful. Thank you.
And I just want to echo what my colleagues had to say. Thank you very much for heroism, and quite apropos, today, we were honoring the Shattuck Awards also. A lot of times, city workers don't get the credit that they deserve, Boston Police also. Thank you for doing what you did. I have young kids at home, we've had medical issues, and as a parent, you can't believe what angst the parents are going through. Thank you for being there that day, and again, thank you very much.
Thank you. Just very briefly, well done, gentlemen. Thank you. You've saved a life, you've kept a family intact, and it's a remarkable thing. I think it shows how important the work our men and women, our first responders, do each and every day, and it's just one great reminder of that. So we're just incredibly grateful. You are credit to the force, certainly credit to the City of Boston, and we're just very proud of you.
I just want to say thank you for this opportunity, and I'm glad that the baby was okay. Thank you.
I'm grateful that the baby's okay, and I thank you guys for acknowledging us. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thank you. Thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you, counselors, for the presentation. At this time, we'll move on to regular order of business. Moving on to approval of the minutes. There are no corrections to be made. The minutes of the last council meeting will stand approved. Seeing and hearing no objections, the minutes are so approved. Moving on to communications from His Honor, the mayor. Yes, Mr. Clerk, if we could read dockets 1452 through 1453.
Docket number 1452, message in order for the approval of a home rule petition to the General Court, entitled petition for a special law relative to enact for certain affordable housing in the Charles Town section of the City of Boston. And docket number 1453, message in order for the approval of a home rule petition to the General Court entitled petition for a special law, enact relative to certain affordable housing in the Brighton section of the City of Boston.
Dockets 1452 through 1453 will be assigned to the Committee on Government Operations.
Docket number 1454, message in order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $248,500 in the form of a grant for the fiscal year 2019 DNA capacity enhancement and backlog reduction program awarded by the National Institute of Justice to be administered by the Police Department. The grant would fund two criminalist positions, overtime, lab supplies, and continuing education expenses.
Docket 1454 will be assigned to the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice.
Docket number 1455, message in order for your approval of an appropriation order in the amount of $175,000 for the Cemetery Division of the Parks and Recreation Department to be funded from the Cemetery Trust Fund established under Chapter 13 of the Acts of 1961.
Docket 1455 will be assigned to the Committee on Environment Sustainability in Parks.
Docket number 1456, message in order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $50,000 awarded from the Massachusetts Marketing Partnership, Massachusetts Office of Travel and Tourism pursuant to line items 7008 through 1116 of the fiscal year 2020 Massachusetts State Budget. The purpose of the grant is to support the Rosendale Gateway Project located in the Rosendale section of the City of Boston.
Counselor O'Malley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise today to ask for suspension and passage of docket 1456, which is a message in order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $50,000 awarded by the Massachusetts Marketing Partnership/Massachusetts Office of Travel and Tourism. This will help fund a really critical part of my district, of District 5, one of our places, very important to you and I, Madam President, the Arnold Arboretum, in creating the Greenway Pathway, which is a family-friendly bicycle and pedestrian path from Rosendale Village Commuter Rail Station to Forest Hills Station, including a new entrance at the Arnold Arboretum at the end of Arboretum Road. This is a project I've obviously been very supportive of. The District 5 Councilor, who represents most of this area, has been very supportive, and also wanted to acknowledge the Outlarch Council for Rosendale for her support of this as well. Funds from this grant will be used to complete the design of the Arboretum Road Green Link so that it can be bid for construction in FY 2020, and any remaining funds will be used to support the construction of the project. We're still a ways off somewhat on this project, but this is a really crucial step to conclude the plan and get the process in place, and really build what I like to call the Emerald Cathedral, one of the most beautiful places in the City of Boston, make it better, better use, more use, more family-friendly, use better infrastructure. So ask for suspension of the rules and acceptance of the grant today. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor O'Malley. Counselor O'Malley, who's chair of the Committee on Environment Sustainability in Parks, seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1456. All those in favor of passage, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1456 has been passed. Mr. Clerk, if we could read dockets 1457 through 1467 together.
Docket number 1457, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of Andrew Shelburne as a member of the Study Committee to prepare the report for the potential designation of the Highland Park Architectural Conservation District. Docket number 1458, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of Curtis Maxwell Perrin as a member of the Study Committee to prepare the report for the potential designation of Highland Park Architectural Conservation District. Docket number 1459, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of Diana Parcon as a member of the Study Committee to prepare the report for the potential designation of a Highland Park Architectural Conservation District. Docket number 1460, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of Ernest Coston as a member of the Study Committee to prepare the report for the potential designation of a Highland Park Architectural Conservation District. Docket number 1461, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of John Freeman as a member of the Study Committee to prepare the report for the potential designation of the Highland Park Architectural Conservation District. Docket number 1462, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of John Elliston as a member of the Study Committee to prepare the report for a potential designation of the Highland Park Architectural Conservation District. Docket number 1463, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of Kristen Hoffman as a member of the Study Committee to prepare the report for the potential designation of Highland Park Architectural Conservation District. Docket number 1464, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of Lucy Lomas as a member of the Study Committee to prepare the report for the potential designation of a Highland Park Architectural Conservation District. Docket number 1465, message in order of the confirmation of the appointment of Lynn Smilich as a member of the Study Committee to prepare the report for the potential designation of a Highland Park Architectural Conservation District. Docket number 1466, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of Maria Andrea Caseres as a member of the Study Committee to prepare the report for the potential designation of a Highland Park Architectural Conservation District. And docket number 1467, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of Susan Goganian as a member of the Study Committee to prepare the report for the potential designation of the Highland Park Architectural Conservation District.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Dockets 1457 through 1467 will be assigned to the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation. Moving on to reports of public officers and others, Mr. Clerk, if we could read dockets 1468 through 1472 together.
Docket number 1468, notice was received from the City Clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 relative to action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the City Council at its meeting of September 18, 2019. Docket number 1469, notice was received from the City Clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 relative to action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the City Council at its meeting of September 25, 2019. Docket number 1470, notice was received from the City Clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 relative to action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the City Council at its meeting of October 2, 2019. Docket number 1471, notice was received from the mayor of his absence from the city from 9:20 PM on Tuesday, October 8, 2019, until 9:00 PM on Saturday, October 12, 2019. Docket number 1472, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Catherine Davis, Director of Special Events and Tourism, effect of October 14, 2019.
Dockets 1468 through 1472 will be placed on file.
Docket number 1473, the Consulate of Dominique Chester has been duly approved by the Collector Treasurer was received.
The Chair, at this time, seeks approval of docket 1473 under the usual terms and conditions. All those in favor of approval, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1473 has been approved under the usual terms and conditions.
Docket number 1474, communication was received from Maureen Joyce, City Auditor, transmitting reports listing transfers made solely for the purpose of closing accounts for fiscal year 2019.
Docket 1474 will be placed on file. Moving on to reports of committees. Counselor Wu, would you like to read all three together? Awesome. Yes, actually, let's read dockets 0545, 0665, and 0970 together. Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
Docket number 0545, the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation, to which was referred on March 20, 2019. Docket number 0545, message in order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $58,916 in the form of a recreational trails program grant awarded by the Massachusetts Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, Department of Conservation and Recreation, to be administered by the Boston Transportation Department. The grant will fund additional expenses, fees, and professional services beyond what was originally anticipated for a new accessible gateway and path in the Arnold Arboretum from the Bussy Street underpass in Rosendale. submits a report recommending the order ought to pass. Docket number 0665, the Committee on Planning and Development, to which was referred on April 24, 2019. Docket number 0665, message in order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $250,000 in the form of a grant awarded by the Boston Redevelopment Authority, DBA, the Boston Planning and Development Agency pursuant to 135 Morrissey Boulevard Cooperation Agreement. The purpose of the grant is to facilitate planning, design, and capital improvements and adjacent to the MBTA's JFK UMass Station. submits a report recommending the order ought to pass. And docket number 0970, the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation, to which was referred on June 19, 2019. Docket number 0970, message in order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $260,000 in the form of a grant awarded by the Boston Redevelopment Authority, DBA, the Boston Planning and Development Agency pursuant to the Winthrop Square Cooperation Agreement, One Post Office Square Cooperation Agreement, and the 15-19 Congress Street Cooperation Agreement. The purpose of the grants is to facilitate planning and design for the Seaport to North Station Rapid Bus Corridor. The Seaport to North Station Rapid Bus Corridor was identified in the GO Boston 2030 as a key future Rapid Bus Corridor. submits a report recommending the order ought to pass.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Counselor Wu, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. We held a hearing on all three of these grants together, and it was kind of divided into two parts. The first docket was described by Charlotte Fleetwood, and then the second two dockets were described by Matt Moran, both from the Boston Transportation Department. The first is for construction and additional costs that weren't anticipated related to the project that Counselor O'Malley just spoke on, the gateway path through Rosendale and the Arboretum over to the Forest Hills Station. This is part of Phase 1, finishing up the construction just for the gate closest to the station. Phase 2 will be designing and building out the boardwalk, and then Phase 3 is the southernmost section. Those latter two phases are in much earlier stages of design and concept. So recommend this for passage because we are at 90% design and want to finish this chunk of it. It will be a huge, huge benefit to the neighborhood, as you heard earlier. The next two dockets are similar in that they're both for funding to hire a consultant to complete a plan. And Counselor Baker and Counselor Flynn asked some really, really great questions about both of these grants. I hope that Counselor Baker might chime in, especially on the JFK UMass one, since he's been so involved with this for a while. The 0665 is about access to JFK UMass Station from the neighborhood side, as it currently, you have to go under the highway, and there's some concerns around mobility, around climate, vulnerability with the flooding, and how the neighborhood will access that with so many future projects under development in the area. We were told that an RFP would be online within four to six weeks to go out to bid for the consultant, and then the process of the consultant working with the community would take probably through the end of next year to come back with an action plan. That plan would have some immediate enhancements and next steps appropriate for the next six to 12 months after that. That funding to do those enhancements... to 12 months after that. That funding to do those enhancements would have to come from elsewhere, not within this. This entire grant is just for the consultant. And then the action plan would also talk about bigger picture items that would likely require the MBTA to be on board in maintaining and changing up the station, particularly because the entry, the entry point from that side, the neighborhood side, is a very set, very steep set of stairs that is sort of crumbling. So there's, there's not accessibility, there's not access on that side. Finally, docket 0970, again, similarly for a consultant to do a plan. This is on a rapid bus plan from the Seaport to North Station. There were no specifics about what streets might be, the routes, about where we might be taking parking versus a lane of traffic or anything like that. We just know that this will be done in the context of current efforts around the downtown that the BPDA is undergoing, is undertaking now, as well as the South Boston Seaport Strategic Transportation Plan that has been finalized in recent years. So I would recommend passage of all three and defer to my colleagues to chime in as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Wu. Council Baker, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to thank the chair for running an efficient, an efficient hearing. Speaking on 0665, it's $250,000 for an RFP for in and around the JFK Station. The money comes from negotiating with the IAG and the owner of that, of that project. The RFP is for, I originally got involved in, in politics because I was, grew up on the other side of the tracks, and this is addressing that issue here. How can the people on the other side of the tracks access the water, the bike paths, the walking paths? How do we get to our train station? How do we just get over to where UMass is going to be? We have a lot of development happening, UMass, Wind Properties, Mokley Park, that neighborhood in there that I, that I grew up with, literally trapped by the highway, by the, by the, the train tracks and by Kuzco Circle. So hopefully, this is going to allow us to plan for the future when the development starts to happen and the mitigation money from these big projects comes in. We will hopefully have shovel-ready projects to be able to say to the developers, say to the, the teams that, that will be there, this is what we would like to see as a community. So this is just very much planning for multimodal walking, biking, baby carriages, that sort of thing. Not a, not a traffic study, more, more of a walking, biking sort of, how do we connect this neighborhood to that neighborhood? Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Council Baker. Council Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you to Council Wu for her leadership on this issue. Just want to echo what Council Baker said as, in regards to 0665, Kuzco Circle is not technically in my, in my district, but it does overlap with, with the area that I represent. There's a lot of development taking place at Bayside, at Miriellan McCormick in Frank's District, in the Savant Hill, in South Boston. But having a traffic plan, a traffic study that includes this important rotary, this important circle, making sure that our cars and pedestrians and people are safe walking in and around this area, but especially people that are coming from the MBTA station over to Mokley Park, we do see a lot of Boston Public Schools students that use the park during the day for various sports. So that is also an important part of this plan as well. Madam President, on 9, on 0970, I just wanted to follow up on Council Wu's comments. The transportation from North Station to Seaport via, via bus, it's also important, and I know BPDA stated as well, but it's also important that there be a robust community input as it relates to the exact route of, of this bus, and also that the residents weigh in how it, how it impacts them, how it impacts their access to their employment, making sure we get to, get residents to and from work safely. So I, I'm going to work closely with BPDA and the, and the chair to make sure that there's a robust community process in ensuring that the residents' voice and commuters as well is heard in this process. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Council Flynn. Anyone else looking to speak on this docket? At this time, Council Wu, who's Chair of the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation, seeks acceptance of the committee reports and passage of these three dockets. I will take each one separately. For passage of docket 0545, all those in favor of passage say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it, docket 0545 has been passed. For passage of docket 0665, all those in favor of passage say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it, docket 0665 has been passed. And lastly, for docket 0970, all those in favor of passage say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it, docket 0970 has been passed. Moving on to matters recently heard for possible action?
Document number 1275, message in order authorizing the city to adopt the property tax exemption for members of the National Guard and reservists who are serving in foreign countries. The city of Boston initially adopted the exemption in fiscal year 20, in 2012, and by law, this local option must be extended by a vote of the city council every two years. The city of Boston shall offer a property tax exemption of up to 100% for active members of the National Guard and reservists.
Council Siomo, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. The committee held its hearing on, do you need me? Oh, sorry. On Monday, October 21, and received testimony from Commissioner Aronella of the Assessing Department. The National Guard exemption, as was stated in the order, gives 100% real estate tax exemption to homeowners who are active members of the National Guard or reservists serving in a foreign country during the fiscal year. The exemption, which the city began offering in fiscal year 2012, requires the city council action to extend this tax relief program every two years per the Massachusetts general laws. Since 2012, the Assessing Department has approved 19 National Guard exemptions, saving qualified members of the National Guard and reservists nearly 40,000 in real estate taxes collectively. This is an important program that provides relief to our fellow Bostonians should they be called to serve abroad. I recommend passage.
Thank you, Council Siomo. Council Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council President. I want to thank the chair for his great work on this great program. It is an exceptional program. I just would like to note for the record is it's for the National Guard and reserves, and it's the reserves affiliated with the National Guard, which means that reservists and other branches would, are not eligible for this program, such as the Marines, Navy, Coast Guard, Air Force as well. Again, it's a great program. I'm glad to support it. The Assessing Department is doing a great job. The city of Boston Veterans Department is working closely with the Assessing Department. But maybe sometime down the road, we can continue having a conversation about how we can get more reservists that are not part of the National Guard, how we can get them involved in this program, because I think it would benefit much more, many more residents of the city. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Council Flynn. At this time, Council Siomo, who's Chair of the Committee on Ways and Means, seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 1275. All those in favor of passage say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it, docket 1275 has been passed.
Document number 1292, order for a hearing regarding prohibiting wearing a mask, hood, or other device to conceal any portion of the face, to conceal the identity of the wearer upon or within public property in the city of Boston.
Council McCarthy, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam President. We had a hearing on October 21, this Monday. I want to thank Superintendent Ridge from the Boston Police Department, as well as Deputy Superintendent Horton from the MBTA. We had some colorful people speaking and giving their version of, of what they feel about this mask ordinance, and they were welcome, and it was great to see them. And we're going to keep this in a working session. Thank you.
Thank you, Council McCarthy. Anyone else looking to speak on this docket? Docket, let's see, docket 1292 will remain in the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice.
Document number 1105, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend a grant from Verizon Wireless for an amount of $1,500,000. The, the purpose of this grant is to fund digital equity programs and to support Smart City Fellow position.
Council Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, we held a hearing on docket 1105 yesterday on a grant from Verizon Wireless for 1.5 million to fund digital equity programs and to support a Smart City Fellow in the Department of New Urban Mechanics. The panelists were Chief Chris Osgood, Casey Wilson, and Chris Carter from New Urban Mechanics. The panelists talked about how the city will use this grant and disburse it to community organizations and fund a fellow that would help the city better integrate technology to help residents. Part of the funding will go to the, go towards the Digital Equity Fund, which awards grants to community organizations like the Castle Square Tenant Organization, the South End Technology Center, other organizations to advance their work on digital equity. These organizations can use the funds for training, equipment, and technology resources for residents. There are about 30 applications last year, and this grant from Verizon would help the Digital Equity Fund to continue to help neighborhood organizations advance their work. The Smart City Fellow would be helping the New Urban Mechanics develop new ways to use technology for city services and civic engagement.
Thank you.
The beta blocks that you see now in the mezzanine is actually part of that project. And this funding would also allow the department to hire, hire a fellow to do more work on this front. I believe that this grant would help our residents and city have a better access to technology and better integrate technology into city services. And I specifically focused on yesterday, how can we use this grant to make sure that the most vulnerable residents of our city that may not have the technology or even the education or skills to work on computer technology, how can it benefit them, especially our elderly, our seniors, persons with disabilities, our immigrant neighbors as well? Madam President, I ask that we vote yes in passage of docket 1105. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Flynn. At this time, Council Flynn, who's Chair of the Committee on City Neighborhood Services and Veterans and Military Affairs, seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 1105. All those in favor of passage say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it, docket 1105 has been passed.
Document number 0583.
Mr. Clerk, if we could actually read, since we did a joint hearing for this, docket 0583 and 0316 together?
Okay.
Thank you.
Document number 0583, order for a hearing regarding vacant properties in the city of Boston. And docket number 0316, order for a hearing to discuss strategies to reduce and activate vacant residential properties in the city of Boston.
Council Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, I want to thank Council O'Malley, President Campbell, Council Edwards on this important hearing that we had yesterday. We held a joint hearing on vacant properties yesterday for docket 0583 and 0316 on vacant properties and to discuss strategies to activate and reduce vacant residential properties, including streamlining the process for pop-ups in vacant properties, putting a fee to reduce vacancies and better data collection. We heard from administration officials yesterday, including Chris English from the Problem Property Task Force, Chief Sheila Dillon, Chief Jerome Smith, and Andrew Grace from the Office of Economic Development. And we talked about the current process of dealing with vacant and problem properties and some of the challenge, some of the challenges on, on these issues. We heard from Monique Fuchs from the Wentworth Institute of Technology and Stephanie Lee from SpaceUS. Both of them are involved in transforming vacant lots into pop-ups and spaces for the community. And they highlighted some of the challenges for activating vacant lots, including difficulties in getting liquor licenses and lack of data. I ask that the docket remaining committee, I want to ask Council O'Malley, President Campbell, to talk more about their takeaway from this hearing yesterday as well. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Council Flynn. Council O'Malley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, as well as to the chair for a really informative meeting and hearing yesterday, went well over two hours, which was slightly less than the last time we did a very similar hearing last year, where it was about three hours. And it really underscores what seems a counterintuitive situation happening as it relates to our real estate. The Boston real estate market has never been hotter, certainly in our lifetimes, probably in any time in history, yet we're seeing many commercial districts, which was the approach that I was focused on, stay vacant for longer periods of time. We're seeing residential units, which was your focus, Madam President, that seem to get overgrown, and, and it's a, a trick that many developers will use, let a place fall into such disrepair that neighbors are resigned to accept many variance changes that a developer would want to be able to build more. And it's wrong. So there's a couple of tools in our toolbox. We can look at to see what other cities have done well. I spent some time with several colleagues in Vancouver, which has, is also grappling with a vacancy fee. They also really have honed in on some of the foreign investment and how that can play a role as well, this notion of high-end life, where we have these multimillion-dollar condos that are essentially tax shelters. Similarly, from the business point of view, obviously, we, we can't force an individual to rent out the space, but you're seeing a real detrimental impact on surrounding businesses. A neighborhood business can see up to 25% of their bottom line fall if there's a long-term vacancy next to it. So there's no action to take today, and quite frankly, it's unlikely that we will take action in terms of an ordinance this year. But talking to you both, all of you and all of our colleagues and folks who've been interested in this, I think there's a real opportunity as we go forward to look at having some registry, a real registry in place with real information. Looking at a vacancy fee, which of course, the media reports ran with today, which was fine, that should be part of it as well. Arlington has used this as a great detriment. They've seen their vacancy commercial rate drop by 40%. Now, you cannot equate the town of Arlington with the city of Boston, but you can certainly equate the town of Arlington with the neighborhood of Jamaica Plain, or West Roxbury, or, or Hyde Park, or several other neighborhoods. So I think there's a lot of work we will continue to do. We've been pushing this and really leading the city and look forward to continuing work and partnership to solve this very real problem. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Council O'Malley, for the partnership as well. And I think the best thing about the hearing was looking at all the tools that we currently have, Problem Property Task Force, the foreclosure registration, and other tools that we could strengthen to reduce commercial vacancies and residential vacancies, and then, of course, looking at other tools that we currently don't have in the toolbox. I really appreciate the partnership. And also, Council Flynn and Council Edwards, thanks for being flexible and jointly holding these hearings together. Thank you both. Docket 0583 will remain in the Committee on City Neighborhood Services and Veterans and Military Affairs, and docket 0316 will remain in the Committee on Housing and Community Development. Moving on to motions, orders, and resolutions.
Document number 1475, Council Garrison offered the following, in order for a hearing regarding the need for more dedicated senior housing in Boston.
Council Garrison, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I filed this order for a hearing regarding the need for more dedicated senior housing in Boston. As I travel across the city, I hear every day from our senior citizens who are frail and vulnerable part of Boston population. They often require care and protection from the challenge they face. While the aid strong commission has stated that their goal is to ensure that Bostonians have safe, secure, affordable housing, concrete ways to realize the goal is to dedicate more housing solely for senior citizens. I, I know senior citizens in Boston right now do not feel safe in their residence. As a result, a mixed housing situation where they are forced to live with those who experience substantive abuse and others who display violent behavior. I believe the city of Boston needs to look at the way in which all allocation of, or does not allocate certain buildings for dedicated senior housing, so that seniors do not feel as though their only option to find safe and secure housing is to enter an assisted living facility or nursing home. I look forward to having an expedited hearing on this very important matter. Thank you, Madam President, and I ask suspension of rules and pass this order.
So the order will be assigned, thank you, Council Garrison. Right, so it's an order for a hearing, so there's no passage required. So I'm going to put it into a committee for a discussion to be had and a hearing to be had on the very topic that you put forward. So we don't need to... So we don't need to take any action but for me to sign it to the appropriate committee, which we will absolutely do. Thank you, Counselor Garrison. Counselor Asabi George, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I rise today to support this hearing order and the need for more senior housing in Boston. We need to do a better job as a city to ensure that we are being inclusive and thoughtful about what we are building in our city. However, I do strongly object to the language used in this hearing order to describe people who are dealing with substance use disorders. It is important to recognize that those who struggle with substance use disorders are people of all kinds, including our seniors. Every person, whether they are struggling with substance use disorders or not, whether they are elderly or not, deserve our respect and safe and supportive housing. I look forward to this hearing to learn about ways that we can ensure our most vulnerable populations have access to the housing and support services they need. Please add my name.
Thank you, Counselor Asabi George. Anyone else looking to speak on this matter or add their name? Mr. Clerk, if you could add Counselor Baker, Counselor Edwards, Counselor Asabi George, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Janey, Counselor McCarthy, as well as the Chair. Docket 1475 would be assigned to the Committee on Housing and Community Development.
Docket number 1476, Counselor Asabi George offered the following, a resolution in support of the Student Opportunity Act.
Counselor Asabi George, you have the floor.
Thank you again, Madam Chair. I rise today in support of the Student Opportunity Act. On October 3rd, the Senate unanimously passed this bill, representing a huge step forward to ensure equitable funding for our public schools. Though we do not have a long-term charter reimbursement solution, the Student Opportunity Act is a substantial update to our state funding formula for our public schools. The Senate's version included Amendment Number 17, which maintains local control over district plans to close the achievement gap and ensure all students, particularly English-language learners, special education, and low-income students, have access to the resources they need. Today, the bill is being debated in the House and we will hopefully have a final bill soon. I'd like to thank a number of partners who have made the Student Opportunity Act happen. First, this bill is the culmination of work of the Fund Our Future campaign, which includes the Boston Teachers Union, Mass. Education Justice Alliance, the Massachusetts Chapter of the American Federation of Teachers, the Massachusetts Teachers Association, then NAACP, Youth On Board, Citizens for Public Schools, Phenom, and the Massachusetts Jobs with Justice. The Fund Our Future campaign is endorsed by incredible Boston community partners like the Chinese Progressive Association, the Jewish Alliance for Law and Social Action, and the Asian-American Resource Workshop, as well as the Boston Education Justice Alliance. This bill would not have been possible without the Joint Committee on Education, in particular Chairs Senator Jason Lewis and Representative Alice Peish. I'd like to extend a special thanks to Senator Pat Jalen of Somerville for her addition of Amendment Number 17, and to Senator Sonia Chang Diaz for being a tireless champion of our public schools of Boston and for ushering in this work that led to this important act. Thank you. I do ask for suspension and adoption of this resolution today.
Thank you, Counselor Asabi George. Counselor Flaherty, you have the floor.
Please add my name, Madam Chair.
Anyone else looking to speak or add their name? Mr. Clerk, if you could add Counselor Baker, Counselor Siomo, Counselor Edwards, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Janey, Counselor McCarthy, Counselor O'Malley, Counselor Wu, Counselor Zachem, as well as the Chair. At this time, Counselor Asabi George seeks suspension of the rules and adoption of Docket 1476. All those in favor of adoption say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it, Docket 1476 has been adopted.
Docket number 1477, Counselor Campbell offered the following, order for a hearing to review the Boston Community Ombudsman Oversight Panel.
Where's the thing? Counselor Campbell.
Thank you, Counselor. So in January, I actually had to look at the dates because it was so long ago, but in January of 2017, I actually introduced this hearing order to review the Community Ombudsman Oversight Panel, and I'm refiling it today again because we never actually had a hearing. And so to remind folks what the co-op panel does, it's an independent group of civilians appointed by the mayor. Feeling the baby move. Thank you. It's an independent group of civilians appointed by the mayor with backgrounds in law, criminal justice, and/or civil process. It was originally established by executive order in 2007 by Mayor Menino to review civilian appeals against the police department in an effort to promote professionalism and, of course, enhance community relations. The panel is facing a backlog of cases, limited capacity to ensure fair and thorough investigations. They actually put out recommendations in a report in December of 2015, and this was the panelists themselves that put out these recommendations. I then filed a hearing order to have a conversation about those recommendations, but we never had the hearing. So I'm filing this again because since then, the mayor has made changes, adopted some of those recommendations from that report back in June of 2017, and it's my understanding they've also acted on some of those recommendations, which is a really great thing. But I think at this point, it's important that the public be provided an opportunity to hear updates. I'm also hearing that there's been some changes in who is serving on the co-op panel. One member who was the Chair is gone, another may be out as well. I've already talked to the administration, as well as members of all of our public safety agencies, police department, folks in the community. This is an opportunity for an update, an actual hearing, to hear from the administration on what the recommendations specifically were and how they are playing out in reality, and also to make sure that we're bringing together not just all of you, but members of the public, the administration, our public safety unions, as well as employees of the police department, to discuss increasingly or strengthen in this body, which is so important and has such an incredible role. I just want to add, and it's important, given the context of what we're talking about, whether it's parades that I think shouldn't have been permitted or other things, that we have to be very careful how we navigate some of these conversations, particularly when it comes to our police officers. We honor two today for some of the heroic work they do every single day. They're putting their lives on the front line. I call Captain Fritzpatrick in B-3 all the time for things happening in our neighborhood. He is extremely responsive. He gets things done, from traffic enforcement to people hanging out in cars and doing illicit activity in Mattapan. So the conversation really is about this report that came out a couple of years ago now, recommendations that the mayor put forward, but there was no opportunity for the council to engage in conversations. And so this is an opportunity for us to do just that. It is not to create an us versus them or to bash anybody. And I'm really grateful to the public safety union's leadership for not only passing this along to their members, but also already saying they're looking forward to also participating in the hearing as well. And I hope, of course, if we can have this hearing before the end of the year, that all of you will also participate and add your voice. Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Siomo.
Thank you. Please assign Docket number one, oh, sorry. I was looking around. Please add Counselor Baker's name, Counselor Edwards, Counselor Asabi George, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Garrison, Counselor Janey, Counselor McCarthy, Counselor O'Malley, Counselor Wu, Counselor Zachem, and the Chair, please. Docket 1477 will be assigned to the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice.
Docket number 1478, Counselor Campbell offered the following, order for a hearing regarding automobile insurance rates in the city of Boston.
Chair recognizes Counselor Campbell.
When you're pregnant, you have to breathe. Just breathe. Your lungs get restricted. So this is, I'm really excited actually to introduce this hearing order. I'm actually hoping before the end of the year that we can start the conversation about what I think is an issue for all of us, especially those that represent districts where you have a larger concentration of people of color or low-income communities. And so anyone that owns a car in the city of Boston definitely knows how extremely high auto insurance is. After hearing from several constituents since I actually joined the council, but most recently in higher numbers, I started looking into the disparities of costs for auto insurance rates, even connected with some of our colleagues at the Attorney General's Office, who have been doing incredible work in this space, as well as colleagues at the State House, and the data is pretty disturbing. Research on the issue shows that auto insurance rates in minority and poor communities cost more on average than they do in wealthier communities, regardless of whether the driver has an excellent driving record. In the most heavily concentrated minority and low-income communities, such as Dorchester, Roxbury, Mattapan, Hyde Park, drivers pay nearly twice as much for significantly less coverage than drivers with a comparable driving record in more affluent communities in the city. This, of course, presents a serious economic hardship for residents and families in our communities that rely on their cars to get to school, to work, or other destinations. And it also presents a hardship for those residents who live in parts of our city that lack direct access to quality, reliable, and fast public transportation options. In the most highly concentrated minority communities, the average premium for all drivers was 90% more per vehicle, roughly $449, than the average premium in communities with lower concentration of minority residents. Legislation has been filed at the state level to address these disparities, even trying to just get a study has been difficult. But I'm calling for a hearing on this issue because I want to create a space where residents can actually come forward and start to publicly talk about the frustration they are seeing with respect to their insurance rates. And these are residents who have been longtime residents in the city of Boston or lifelong, who are moving sometimes from one community to another community in the city of Boston and are shocked to see their auto insurance rates skyrocket, double, or triple. I do know that in California, for example, there are regulations that limit the effects of certain rating factors by basing premiums primarily on your driving record, the miles you drive, and the years of driving experience that you have. I do think it's a good time to take a deeper look at the disparities, to have a conversation with all of my colleagues with respect to this, and also with the hopes that we pull out more residents who are complaining about this every day, maybe just to their neighbors, but do it in a public way and provide a platform for them to share, and then hopefully get insurance companies, the AG's office, and others who've been working on this in a hearing at the council to talk about what we can do to address the issues. So look forward to working in partnership with all of you and hope to have a hearing before the end of the year. Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Siomo.
Counselor McCarthy.
Thank you for, yeah, calling out of order. I thought, you know, you drew me off there. I couldn't agree more with Counsel President. Please sign me on. Representing the most diverse district in the city, District 5, I can tell you that the disparity between Hyde Park, Mattapan, and even Rosendale, two other parts of the city, is ridiculous. As, you know, an owner of three cars, you know, start the Twitter bug now, the newest car we have is a 2013, and I'm paying $4,500, which is ridiculous, knowing that the person who lives in Dedham or lives in Westwood is paying $1,700 for three cars or two cars. We know the disparity exists. I'm looking forward to a conversation with the President and looking forward to the hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. Please add Counselor McCarthy's name. Counselor O'Malley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I rise to commend the maker, the council president. I am really excited about this. I just wanted to sort of offer a couple of, some perspective on it, just to show how inherently unfair and inconsistent the system is. The house where I grew up was originally West Roxbury. It then became Rosendale in probably the '50s or the '60s, and then in 2007, when they moved the post office, they reclassified it back as West Roxbury. Now, I actually live in the same neighborhood now, not the same house, obviously, but my father would often say, you know, he lived in three different neighborhoods while being in the same house over a number of years. You could go to get car insurance, and it was seen as Rosendale, and if you brought the deed to your house that said West Roxbury, your premiums would be not cut in half, but probably 40% off, 35% off, for the same house. So the same house, if it happened to have been built 10 years earlier than the house next door, would be able to save money on car insurance. I mean, that's absurd, and it shows how deeply flawed the system is. That's one piece. The second piece, which I hope, and I know the council president will want to include is this, is we have a real issue in this city. No one really wants to talk about it, but people who register their cars elsewhere, they'll register at their parents' house down the Cape or on the South Shore, sometimes New Hampshire, other state plates, which then further exacerbates this thing. And you've got Boston ratepayers that are doing the right thing, paying at their lawful residence, have to absorb that cost and pay more. So that's something that we need to be talking about as well. And then making sure that the state's here. I know one of our former colleagues, the former District 5 Counselor before, the current District 5 Counselor is talking about this issue as well for many, many years. I know others, the at-large counsel from South Boston has as well. We have to make sure that the state is seated at the table when we have this conversation and use the full bully pulpit that we can offer to try to affect change, because ultimately the state is in leadership with this. But I think the better opportunity we have to expose the rank hypocrisy and the unethical system that's in place as it relates to auto insurance, the better we'll serve our constituents. So thank you. Please add my name.
Please add Counselor O'Malley's name. Chair recognizes Counselor Flaherty.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to be the first to say, "Three-cop Tim," and have my name added.
Please add Counselor Flaherty's name, Counselor Baker, Counselor Edwards, Counselor Asabi George, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Garrison, Counselor Janey, Counselor Wu, Counselor Zachem, and the Chair, please. Docket 1478 will be assigned to the Committee on Small Business and Consumer Affairs.
Docket number 1479, Counselor Campbell for Counselor Flynn.
Counselor Flynn seeks suspension of the rules and passage of Docket 1479. All those in favor of passage say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it, Docket 1479 has been passed. I'm informed by the clerk that there are zero late-file matters. Therefore, anybody wishing to remove a matter from the green sheets may do so now. Moving right along. I am informed by the clerk that there are two late-file matters for the consent agenda, which in absence of objection will be added. Hearing and seeing no objection, the two matters are added. At this time, the Chair moves for adoption of the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. The consent agenda has been adopted. Announcements? Does anyone have any announcements? Counselor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, I just wanted to notify my colleagues that today at 3:30, the Mayor's Commission for Persons with Disabilities will present their annual report. That's at 3:30 today here at the Piedmonte Room. And on behalf of my colleagues, we have an official resolution thanking the members for their great work on working to make sure that our persons with disabilities have equal access throughout the city. I also want to thank Counselor Zachem, as Chair of the Civil Rights Committee, and his work on persons with disabilities. I'm proud to be the vice chair. I want to thank him for a lot of great work over the years on this important issue. And I'll make sure that I let the members of the committee, the commission, rather, know about the great work that they're doing and the thanks from the city council as well. So I just want to pass that along to my colleagues. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Flynn. Anyone else have any announcements? Just two quick ones. Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Baker, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to announce, we had somewhat of a failed trip yesterday out to Long Island. We listened to the plan of what the administration has in store, even though it seems like it may be far off in our future. If we don't stay with this plan, this crisis will only get worse, and it will play out in all of our neighborhoods. It's kind of centralized down by mass and cast now. It will only get worse. I thought it was good in a sense where it'll be public-private partnerships, but the whole area will be available to all the people there, from wellness to family interactions will happen. People will be able to get off the island and go to work, have some sort of freedom. I think that this could be cutting-edge in a model that the rest of the country may want to look at. So just for people to stay open to it and pay attention to it, I think it's very, very important. We're going to need all hands on deck. We're going to need Long Island, we're going to need the Shattuck, we're going to need more step-up housing, which is not necessarily the sober housing, but we need to deal with the people. We're good at getting people into detox. What we're failing is those people after they come out of detox. If they're fortunate to have 30 days or 60 days to dry out, we're losing the battle when they come out of there. There's really, really good programs like Hope House, if anybody wants to look at Hope House, places like that. Gavin. Gavin House. We need to augment those programs, so just wanted to flag that for people. Thank you.
No, thank you very much, Counsel Baker. Anyone else have any other announcements? I just have two quick ones. One is tomorrow is our last racial equity training. It is at 9:00 a.m. in the Piedmonte Room. And then, it's obviously Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and so if folks could stick around at the very end for a photo, Kerry would be very happy, and he does a lot for us. So we should do this for Kerry and also for all those folks who not only acknowledge this month, but have actually battled breast cancer. Some have won, some have not. I think it's affected all of us sitting here. So if you could stick around for a couple of minutes after the meeting, that would be great. Thank you. At this time, I would like all of my colleagues, guests, and staff to please rise as we adjourn today's meeting in memory of the following individuals. For Counselor Baker, Jimmy Blackmore. For Counselor Janey and the Chair, Sergio Congalos. For Counselor Janey, Janelle Goncalves. For Counselors Flaherty and Flynn, John Mahoney, Michael Lynch, and Frances Dillon. For Counselor Garrison, Florence Elizabeth Miranda. And of course, for the entire council, Rep. Elijah Cummings and one of the truly great public servants and public employees, Bill McGonigal. A moment of silence, please. The Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of those aforementioned individuals. We are scheduled to meet again in this chamber on Wednesday, October 30th, at 12:00 noon at Boston City Hall. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the council is adjourned.